Glendale City Council and the Glendale Successor Agency on June 5th, 2012. Roll call for the City Council, please.
Council members, Friedman.
Here.
Manukian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
Here. And for the Successor Agency.
Board members, Friedman.
Here.
Manukian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Chair Quintero.
Here.
Would you read the, read your report, please?
Agenda for the June 5th, 2012 Joint Public Meeting of the City Council and the Successor Agency was postponed Thursday, May 31st, 2012, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. For you is Director of Community Development regarding downtown Glendale Community Benefit District Petition Phase I, A is Council Resolution Intention to Establish a Community Benefit District in Downtown Glendale, one B is Council Motion Authorizing City Manager to Sign the Ballots for City-Owned Property in Support of the Community Benefit District.
Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, sir. We have a rather momentous item before you as the Successor Agency and City Council today, a long time in the making. Being able to put forth a community benefit district that allows stakeholders, property owners, businesses on the, in the downtown, to contribute towards a heightened level of cleaning, a heightened level of promotion, heightened level of activity and business development that is self-funded and also self-directed. This is something that while not necessarily unique in our region and even in our country, it is something that is special to see because you have folks who want to get involved and who are looking to leverage their partnership with the city. So with that, Allison Maxwell from our CDD Department will give you the presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Thank you, Scott. That was pretty much summarized what I was wanting to say about the Community Benefit District.
Your name, your name for the record, please.
Allison Maxwell, Deputy Director for Economic Development. We have here today, the item before you is to approve the resolution of intention to move forward with the Community Benefit District for the downtown Glendale area. This is, this represents the first step in the legal process. It's not the creation of the district. It's the approval of the resolution of intention to go forward to a Proposition 218 ballot. So, the request is that you approve that resolution of intention and also a motion authorizing the city manager to sign for the city in support of the Community Benefit District. The bulk of the presentation, in fact, is going to be given to you by Mr. Lemandri, who is the President of New City America, who has been hired by the Steering Committee, the members of the Business Group with the city, to put together this complex district and to prepare it and bring it forward to you. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Lemandri, and he will be able to answer also your technical questions. There are also members here from the Steering Committee who I think have put in speaking slips to talk to you about their perspective of why they would like your support with this project.
Thanks, Allison. Marco Lemandri, New City America. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council Member, City Manager. In a nutshell, the proposal is to create the Community Benefit District, which is formed under the local enabling ordinance and authorized under Proposition 218 of the state constitution. It'll generate, it's projected to generate in the first year $908,000, and over a seven-year period, about $6.3 million, to fund special improvements and benefits along Brand Boulevard between the 134 and Colorado Street and on one block and a little bit to the west, including the General Growth Properties Americana on Brand, and then up to Maryland. It will commence January 2013. It includes about 23 square blocks, 298 parcels, and of that $908,000 budget, about 50, 61% is allocated for what we call sidewalk operations and beautification. About 22% or $205,000 is allocated for what we call district identity, special events and marketing promotion, and about $135,000 or 15% is allocated for program management. And I think Glendale among, similar to many cities in this region, I mean, we have about 22 million people that live in the LA basin or anywhere from San Diego to Santa Barbara, and particularly in the core areas, the urban areas, they're becoming far more dense, and I think the next wave will be residential, and we've just begun to see the beginning of that in downtown Glendale. We know also with the end of redevelopment that the ability to fund a lot of these improvements is no longer available, and this becomes a great strategy for funding a lot of those improvements. It reflects the era that we're moving into also, which is the era of private and public partnerships. And the petitions that we've been able to acquire in the last two weeks, we have well over, at this point, 32% of the property owners, as part of the gross, have signed a petition representing $270,000 in assessments, or a little bit more, that does not include the city's portion. The city's about 9%. If we were to add the city in, we would have had 41% support for moving forward to the balloting phase. That's really an unprecedented amount of support within a two-week period. We believe that this is really the way that cities will operate in the future, working with property owners, benefiting property owners and residents as well as businesses in partnership with the city to fund a lot of these improvements that are over and above what the general fund is currently providing. So we believe and would encourage the City Council to move forward with a resolution of intent. We have a public hearing scheduled for July 24th. At that point, the ballots will be counted. The district will be formed if the weighted return ballots support the formation of the district, and then the City Council then moves forward to authorize the, levy the assessments on the parcels that will be benefiting from the assessment district. There are a few people that want to speak, but I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that the City Council might have regarding this proposal.
Question in general. Let's form the revenue raised, but in essence, take care of a lot of street maintenance and whatever on Brand Boulevard, basically.
Correct. You currently, you currently, I'm sorry.
I was just wondering, does that take it out of the general fund? In other words, we're saving because the BID will take care of things like the street cleaning and stuff that, that we've done in the past?
There's currently an assessment district on Brand Boulevard to fund those things, and the proposal is that that assessment district would be put in abeyance or postponed while this is in place for the next seven years. So the property owners that are paying for that assessment district right now would no longer be paying into that, but this would heighten that assessment from, I think it's approximately $130,000, $140,000 a year currently, to about $550,000, which would include Brand Boulevard as well as some of the areas on each side of it.
That was a bad example, using the sidewalk clearing, because I know about that, but is there other things that the city does in downtown, promotions, whatever, that would be taken over by the BID, therefore saving the general fund money?
I would have Allison respond to that because she's far more knowledgeable of that than I am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Council. The, the, at the moment, the city provides both enhanced benefits to Brand Boulevard and regular benefits that it would provide to everybody else in the city. For example, the general, generally, streets get swept about once a week, so that's what you would call the general, the city's general benefit obligation to the city. That won't change because a special assessment has to be paid for enhanced benefits. You can't be replacing general benefits that the city already provides. However, the enhanced cleaning that gets provided in some areas of Brand Boulevard, which I think is up to four times a week, that will be taken over by the assessment district because that is an enhanced special benefit. Okay?
The easiest way to look at it is that this assessment district would supplement and not supplant the city's general obligations.
Does that answer my question? There's nothing that's going to be replaced.
Right.
Supplemented only.
Mr. Najarian.
Question. With regard to these assessments, are these assessments something that can or are likely to be passed on to the individual tenants? I'm thinking of that big office building at 101 North Brand, the CPK Building. So is that something that the landlord would vote for, but ultimately then pass it through to all the tenants through CAM charges or something like that? And is such a pass-through legal if it's something that the, that the owner voted for, voted to incur, to obligate himself to, to pay? I'm, I'm not sure that maybe goes beyond your purview, but that's a question that, that comes to my mind. Our Mona Building, for instance, we own it, we're going to be leasing it to the Museum of Neon Art. Will they be paying that assessment, or will the city be paying that assessment? And would we have the right to pass that through in any event if the city voted to implement this?
I'll give you a brief answer, and then I'll defer to Gillian on the specifics. The pass-through obligation is a determination between the landlord and tenant. So, I've been in situations when a landlord says, "I want to pay 50% of it. I'm only going to put 50% onto the tenant," or the landlord says, "I'm going to pay 100% of it because I don't want to drive my tenants away," or they say, "I'm going to pass 100% of it through." I don't know what those relationships are. We know that legally, we have to send the ballot to the last county tax role, the owner of the last county tax role, or who paid the property taxes. That's what our obligation is. But I never try to figure out what a landlord's going to do. If it's possible and the lease is written in that way, then they very, they may very well do that as part of their rights, but whether they do that or not is really up to the landlord. How that relates to city property, I could not tell you. So, Gillian, or you want to respond to that?
Mayor, Members of Council, that's essentially correct. It's a private transaction, and how that lease is set up, triple net lease or otherwise, is a negotiation, and that, it's a separate transaction, and it would not be illegal for a property owner to pass that on, of course, subject to concerns about retaining tenants in the building, et cetera. Now, in terms of the city being exempt from those assessments, no, it is not. Specifically, Amendments of 218 require that city properties also be assessed, to the extent that they are receiving the special benefits. And indeed, the Mona property and other publicly-owned properties that are within the, within the benefit district zones would be receiving those enhanced benefits to the same extent that privately-owned properties would be. I hope that answers your question.
Okay. I, I think it does.
I have a question, though. The Mona property, that property was owned by the agency, so it's now going to be owned by this successor agency? So who would actually pay those assessments? It wouldn't be the city. We don't own the building.
Right.
Whoever the property owner is, is it, whether it's a public entity or a private entity?
Right, but it wouldn't be the city of Glendale.
Not necessarily.
It could be only to the extent that technically the city is the successor agency.
But the funds for those projects that was formerly a development agency wouldn't be general funds. It would be the state.
Well, it would be an obligation to the successor agency to pay that.
That could very well then go on the ROPS.
And you would, it would go on the ROPS. In fact, we did anticipate this and have that approved, for successor agency property.
The source of payment could be property tax funds, or it could be another source of payment that's available to the agency, but it would be listed on the ROPS. That's correct.
And did the Oversight Board approve that?
They approved the ROPS, yes, sir.
And did the, what's the next step up?
Department of Finance.
Do they approve that?
Yes, they did.
Okay, so we're good with that?
It was a small enough number that they said yes.
Okay, so that's something that they would agree to pay if necessary.
Subject to review during the next ROPS period.
So they're good for six months.
Mr. Manukian.
Concern for me is if the ballot initiative passes with a 9% margin or less, that the city's basically deciding to go. That would be of a concern to me, what the property owners think about the BID without really relying on the city's vote.
I'd, I'd have to defer to the members of the business community that are here. I do know from individual conversations, they do want the city's participation, but not necessarily simply to, to carry them over the threshold. There's two ways to look at it. Either, either, you know, we do get them over the threshold, or it's just us paying our fair share and thus exercising our franchise pursuant to it. But I would have to, in terms of how the businesses view our participation, sir, I'd have to defer to the businesses here.
So we have a 9%, ownership of properties in the area?
Of the gross weight, correct.
And our vote would count as 9% awaited?
Correct. If you convert dollars to votes, then you would have about 9% of the actual votes.
And we would be voting yes on the initiative?
Presumably. As directed, well, directed by the City Council. Right.
And the same question, though, for the Mona Building. Who votes for that?
Successor agency.
The successor agency. You have to have a separate vote of the successor agency for any, is that the only, there would also be, so the Wilson property would also be, fall under that category?
The Alex.
The Alex would fall under that category?
Correct.
Okay, so there would have to be two votes. Well, yeah, most of the property would come under this successor agency.
Well, that's correct.
Not the City Council.
Most of the property, property would be this successor agency. There may be some city-owned properties as well.
And does the Oversight Committee have to echo that vote, or does it just come to us? Or nobody knows. Nobody's anticipated that.
That one I'd have to defer to Phil, but I do think that if, if the Successor Agency, I'm sorry, Oversight Board has approved the ROPS, they have thus assented. At least that's my story, and I'm sticking to it.
Okay.
Who owns, who owns the park at the Americana and the land underneath the parking structure?
The Successor Agency has those, yeah.
Well, technically, the city, we did do the transfer, but we, we may at some point be ordered to transfer that back to the successor agency, but as we speak, it's a city.
Would that fall into the, this whole initiative? Is it part of the 9%?
That I don't know.
Yeah, I'm getting the yeses.
All right, we have a number of speakers. Paul Chase, followed by Jerry Kragnati.
She's outside.
Some Mayor Council members. Paul Chase, I represent General Growth Properties, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to come here and speak to you regarding the, what we're talking about. General Growth is, is very supportive of what we're asking you guys to vote yes on, and, and there's many reasons why. We're, we're making a big investment in the community, and we're excited about that, and we think this is just another investment to what Glendale can be, is today, and what it will be in the future. You know, what it does to us and what we think it does to the city is it continues to build upon what's exciting going on in the city of Glendale. Like Rick had said earlier, or Marco had said earlier, there's not a lot of places in this country where you have a new Bloomingdale's, you have a new Nordstrom's being either built or renovated. You have a, a shopping center, and Glendale Galleria is considered one of the best in the United States, if not on the West Coast, one of the better ones on the West Coast, and then you have Americana next to it, and then all of those things are located next to a downtown district. Usually, they're separated with some distance. So we have something that we can really do something special with, and so we support it because we think it's important that we continue to, to build upon that momentum. We'd also like to, to market it as a, as a district. We want to market this with our partners as, as a retail district, a business district versus the Americana, versus just the Galleria, versus the local guys. We think the combined efforts of our talents, working with our, our partners, will be something better than, than individually. And last, and you know, we're excited to partner with the city. We're excited to partner with the local businesses, and we're really excited to partner with Caruso across the street. We think the, the partnership of all these players together is unique and special, and can continue to build on something that's really unique in the United States. It's something really special that we're excited about, so.
Thank you. Jerry Kragnati, followed by Dennis Di Pietro.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, and staff. My name is Jerry Kragnati, and I'm a resident and business citizen of Glendale. You have before you a great opportunity to allow dedicated, responsible businesses to assess themselves to enhance their business climate, certainly for themselves, but also for the benefit of our city. The Community Benefit District helps Glendale compete, as we must today, with other aggressive cities throughout our state. As a longtime resident of Glendale and a Glendale business citizen, I am asking you to move forward with accepting these petitions, authorize a vote, and by all means, authorize our city manager to support the petition on behalf of the city's property, and to also do so with an upcoming vote. It's important that our city show our business community that when they volunteer and do the necessary work, gain appropriate votes, that the city will join in their cause. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis Di Pietro, followed by Herbert Milano.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name is Dennis Di Pietro. I'm a member of the proposed downtown CBD, representing a family-owned retail and commercial and office property at Brandon, Colorado, which represents about 1% of the, of the area ownership. The downtown CBD will benefit all of the property owners in various ways. For us on South Brand, it will help address some of the unique issues related to the Central Park and the library. We have been involved in the formation of the Pasadena/South Lake P-Bid, and have seen the positive results of that improvement district. And to answer one of the City Council's comments, we did poll our tenants before we entered into that, and obviously, everyone is reluctant to pay any kind of additional assessments, but once that P-Bid was done, they were very supportive, and we have certainly seen the positive results of that, of that district. Certainly, this will have a financial impact for us owning a shallow corner property for, which translates to about seven cents per building square foot increase over the special Brand Boulevard assessment that we already pay. But we see the significant positives in security, sidewalk cleanliness, and marketing. I'm a member of the, of the Police Advisory Committee, and I, and I certainly see the impact that, that the budget has on the policing, and we look forward to the, and the enhanced policing that this, this CBD will provide. Most importantly, we see the district as a way for us, the property owners, to control and direct these assessments for the exclusive benefit of the, of the area. I urge you to accept the staff report and approve the resolution of intention to establish the downtown CBD and motion to sign the city-owned property petitions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Herbert Milano, followed by Joseph Stix.
Mayor Quintero, members of the City Council and staff, my name is Herbert Milano. Back in 1988, 1989, I had my offices on Brand, on Broadway in Orange, and then for many years, I had my office at 114 North Brand. And I, and had an opportunity to, to befriend a lot of the local businesses and merchants in the area, and due to their proximity to my building, I continue to, to frequent a lot of these merchants and restaurants in Glendale. But invariably, I find myself going to Pasadena. Colorado Boulevard has always been a significantly vibrant place to be, South Lake as well, and the, and the manner in which Pasadena has basically handled its improvement districts, I think is really commendable. I think that we can learn a significant amount from them. What I began to wonder, though, is that we know very well that the Brand Boulevard in this area needs a significant amount of infusion of energy and money, and it just sounds to me that it's kind of ironic that it really takes for the businesses to take hold of their own, should we say, self-imposed tax, for them to direct the benefit for themselves. And I began to wonder what happened to the redevelopment agency in all of these years, when the agency was flush with money, and, and when it was within the city's purview to basically control and use the money in an effective way, that it didn't happen. And I think that is what is taking place, that what is taking place is that a lot of the taxation that basically goes into this general large pools, eventually don't really turn out to be of the benefit to the taxpayer and the, and the property owner and the business owner. It only happens when you have a special assessment where they themselves could say, "Okay, we got the money. Now we know what to do with this thing and make it work for us." That's the problem that I have with this. The problem that it seems to me as if the overall general property taxes and the, the significant amount of revenue that the city obtains gets into this amazingly dark hole, you know, where eventually the services are not really provided, where eventually the money basically goes into pensions and benefits and, and significant lack of accountability and lack of performance objectives. You know, we've had an economic development position within the city of Glendale, but I've never seen Brand Boulevard become truly vibrant. You know, if you go today on, on Broadway between, I guess, Maryland and, and Brand, all of the shops on the south side are clustered, closed. And I think that's, it gives us a pause to, to think about how it is and that the taxation and the property taxes and so forth are being redirected. Thank you.
Joseph Stix, followed by Rick Lemo. Civics, excuse me.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, and I struggle with my last name all the time, too, so don't worry about that. I would, we're here as, I'm part of the steering committee.
You need it for the record, Joseph.
Oh, excuse me. My name is Joseph P. Stiddick. I'm here as part of the, a member of the Steering Committee that has worked on this program for the last couple of years, and I would request that you support signing the petition on behalf of the city's properties. It's an anomaly that occurs very rarely that you have a, a combination of property owners, other stakeholders combining with the city, and assessing themselves to create something that we think is going to be terrific for the downtown. There needs to be a unified approach to marketing the downtown area. It would not only benefit the property owners, we see that that'll increase the value of the property over the years as her vacancy rates decrease, which is really important in today's economy. Being able to market the central business district in a unified manner, being able to present the central business district in a unified manner with clean and safe programs, this is an important step for the community. We've been looking at this, trying to get it accomplished for a number of years, and this is the vehicle that will allow us to do that. It's never been done before, and I think it's time for that to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Lemo.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council staff. Rick Lemo, business resident of Glendale. And before I get started with the technology we have nowadays, our vice chair of our committee, Helen McDonough, and another committee member, Raul Porto, have asked me to express their support for, not only for the Community Benefit District, but also for asking the city to support it with their vote as well. Helen had to make a run to the hospital with a friend, and Raul has a son that's graduating tonight, and I think he wanted to get a good seat at the graduation. So they've asked me to carry forth their opinion. People say, "Why does Caruso and why does the, the Galleria support this?" They have the heaviest dollar involved in it, and will probably take advantage of the least amount of services. We both provide most of these services ourselves and are very satisfied with the way that we're doing it. But we both, at different levels in time, the Galleria before their current ownership was even here, and us from the very beginning, had a commitment to the city of Glendale that we would deem ourselves a success if that success spread up Brand Boulevard. And this is one of the major pieces of the puzzle to let that happen. We are deeply involved with this community, whether it be through the Chamber of Commerce, different boards that our, our people, that we work with, sit on, the Police Foundation, a variety of causes. Why? Because this is our town, too. Why we think it's so important for this Business Improvement District to happen is Glendale is in an extraordinary competitive position with other cities. I have the relative good fortune of meeting with a lot of folks down in LA. They're still smarting over legal Zoom. They still have a hard time that other cities are becoming so aggressive. We don't have a business tax they do in LA. And so, our Business Improvement District will help us, both from a clean and safe standpoint, from a marketing standpoint, be able to take those, what we know about Glendale, and bring it outside. When we talk about clean and safe, it actually frees the police to work on police activity, while we'll have uniformed people who will direct people around and keep people moving, and just their presence minimizes, you know, some petty-type crimes. So what we're asking for today is not only that you support it, and it's important that you know that the threshold was achieved without the city. The threshold to have this petition go to a vote has been achieved without the city. So why do we need the city to vote for the petition? It's important that we show our businesses that when we're willing to step up to the plate, you're there to support us. Your businesses and residents support Glendale every single day in a myriad of ways. We're asking that you would support it, and also authorize our city manager to support it when it comes to a vote. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Okay, that's the final card comments. Najarian, followed by Ms. Friedman.
I saw the advantages of a, what was called a Business Improvement District a couple years ago when I was in New York, and I was walking down Fifth Avenue, and I, you know, I started thinking, "Wow, this is kind of like analogous to Brand Boulevard, you know, their main showcase shopping area with a lot of businesses." And I was noticing how clean it was compared to other streets surrounding it, and then I ran into a I ran into a guy that looked like a policeman, and I saw a funny-looking patch on his arm, and it said, "Fifth Avenue BID." And it was, then it dawned on me that this is, in fact, what they're doing. The businesses apparently got together, and property owners, and created a BID, and made sure that Fifth Avenue is going to be the premier location for shopping, dining, and businesses in New York City. And not to say that the rest of the New York municipal government and service providers couldn't handle it, but they wanted to distinguish themselves, those property owners, to be something better, you know, the cream of the cream of the Big Apple. So, you know, I saw it firsthand. It makes sense here. The business owners, I think, are ready to step up, from what I hear, to commit to this. And really, this is, this is very important for us. We've got the, we've got the Galleria, we've got the Americana, we've got great mid-brand, and that's what we're all about. So we've got to make Brand Boulevard as absolutely sparkling and safe and enjoyable as possible, as friendly, shopper-friendly, consumer-friendly as possible. And I think this proposal is going to do it. So I'm, it makes sense to me, and I'm going to support it.
Ms. Friedman.
I think this is a great example of the type of public-private partnership that a lot of people are calling for in this country, private business working with the city to make an area better, not just for the businesses, but for the entire community. I have a question that I'm going to ask, and then if anybody wants to answer it, that's fine. If you don't want to answer it, that's fine. Listening to Mr. Milano's concerns about the money being spent, sort of passed through the city for these enhanced, these enhanced benefits for the area, and his concern that it might be money going into a black hole, because I think that he feels that the city has not done a good job at cleaning the city, at providing a vibrant downtown. To listen to him, stores are closed up and down Brand. I assume he's comparing it to where he lives in Tahunga, I'm not sure. He did mention Pasadena. So my question is, if that's the case, if we're just on a terrible job spending all of our money on salaries and pensions and not giving any back to the residents, why are Bloomingdales and Nordstroms, why did they pick Glendale to move to? I'm really confused by that. Maybe you have some insights.
That's somewhat a rhetorical question.
No, no, I'd like to hear what your perspective is.
So make it, make it brief, Ms. ...
Okay. Well, first of all, Rick Lemo, business resident of Glendale, and I can tell you that Nordstrom has decided to make a significant investment to improve their facility. And Bloomingdales didn't want to go anywhere in this economy until they had a city that fit the demographic that Glendale does. They had a host like the Glendale Galleria that fit what they were looking for, and they had an upgraded Nordstrom. So everything seems to be working, plus they got one thing in Glendale that they couldn't get, except for in major cities. In addition to being connected to a great facility like the Galleria, they're also on a major street corner in the heart of Brand.
But if the city's so blighted, as Mr. Milano seems to say, that there are stores closed, there's no vibrancy, there's no pedestrian presence, I mean, is that your experience in Glendale?
The most honest answer I can give you as a member of the Glendale Arts Board of Directors, and very, very involved in the city after dark, we have one real problem on Brand Boulevard. Businesses all don't have the same faith that they should stay open, but the, but the, the center of that cell is there. I don't see it all dark. I don't see it blighted. And I guess what I would ask you all to do is, if you really want to see it on a super heyday, take a look at it on cruise night or other days, or when we do the Taste of Glendale. If you are active in this city and you're involved, you wouldn't say that Brand Boulevard is blighted. One other thing, mayor, if I could just take one more minute, because I neglected something very, very important. I want to make certain that, on behalf of everybody on the steering committee, we thank city management and city staff, because you cannot imagine the amount of patience they had to go through with five or six of us people who really didn't know what we were doing, and we needed to come up, call them up and get answers and get guidance and help. And so on behalf of our entire steering committee, we want to thank the entire Glendale city staff and management for really helping us figure out how we needed to get this done. Thank you.
Any comments?
Listen, I've sat here 16 years, and all those years, we have tried to figure out a way to activate Brand, to really getting it to pop. This time, all I can say is, we're making strides. In the next decade, we'll probably be seeing a lot additional growth, thanks to the Americana and the Galleria, and other projects may come in there. But fortunately, government can't do it all. Some people think, well, we ought to be, have enough money to do everything. It takes the private-public partnerships more so than ever to make things happen. And when this happens, I think you'll see even more new businesses coming here, because there is a BID here, that they see that the businesses downtown that are there do care, they'll be more apt to come here, additional police, additional cleaning. There'll be a lot of things that will be seen as a positive, and coupled with our relatively low lease rates as of now, there's a lot of attractive things to come in for. I gather all the businesses in the Americana, the Galleria, like the fact we don't have a business license tax in this city. It's a big advantage. Only four or five in all Southern California, they don't have one. Yes, Brand Boulevard needs work, it needs improvement. Many of those blocks look exactly like they did when I was growing up here in the 1940s. Nothing's changed. Some things take time and effort. Colorado Boulevard in Pasadena, yeah, I remember what happened. Westwood used to be the place to go. Everybody was out there, my family, we'd go out there. But then they had a shooting. People killed out there. Boy, overnight, Pasadena and Colorado became the place to go, just overnight. So it takes triggers. I don't want anything like that to happen, but things occur that you can't always plan on doing that will change things. And I think this will be good. Glad to finally see the businesses that we've tried for years to want to come together to actually make this happen, to begin to recognize that fact. Only thing I wanted to ask, this money's collected, maybe it's in this report, I missed it, who collects it and who manages it for, I mean, is it like the BID on Montrose, where this city reimburses, or what?
It'll become a line item on the property tax bill, so it'll be collected by the county, and the county will then transfer the funds to the city. The city will enter into an agreement with a nonprofit corporation made up of the people paying into the district, so the nonprofit corporation will administer the funds as per the plan that you adopt.
Oh, okay. Thank you. So with that, yeah, I fully support it.
Mr. Manukin-Yamni, comment?
No, I'm not favorable.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I might indicate that, based on our discussion, and in order to make the authority parallel with 1B, which is the council authorization of the city manager to sign the ballots on behalf of city-owned property, we need a parallel motion at C for the successor agency to move, to authorize the executive director to sign the ballots on behalf of successor agency-owned property. So I'd just note that.
So we're moving A, B, and C?
There, A is a council resolution of intention, B is a council motion authorizing city manager, and C is a successor agency motion authorizing the executive director.
Oh, so we do the two and then the successor second?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, well, I am very happy that we have reached this point. I know the staff and the business people in the committee has been working on it for a long, long time, because there were lots of opinions on this particular plan, but I know that, for the most part, all the business people I've talked to, including some of the smaller property owners and so forth, they are on board. So I think they're, they're going to vote in the affirmative. I do have a comment, and that is that quite a few of the business people that I've talked to, the smaller, they are really not particularly concerned with security services. Now, what is emphasized, like Mr. Najarian mentioned, is not really sort of security cops, more people that are in somewhat of a uniform, and they're giving directions, and they're the kind of eyes and ears. I've seen it in New York, I've also seen it in Atlanta, and I think that works quite well. But I think most of the businesses on Brand, at least, you know, the mid-brand, I think what they're looking for is marketing and promotion and special community or neighborhood fairs. All of this is within the purview of what this committee will do. But I sure hope that we go in that direction first, because perhaps as the activity increases, then we will need more security, including security cameras, and, but at this point, I think it's less about security and more about, about trying to get more, more people to shop there and go to the restaurants, et cetera. Quite frankly, Old Town Pasadena, at this point, I'm barely interested in going there. When you really examine the kind of restaurants that are there, I mean, there's a heck of a lot of franchises and just the same things that you see in the rest of America, as opposed to the Brand there in the mid-brand area. We've got, of course, Portos, Carousel, the Argentinian restaurant, a Peruvian, Thai. I mean, we've got some real interesting places to eat there at mid-brand, and it is busy during the week and then on the weekends. We can just do better. And with the movie theaters that are coming into town, I think, in fact, that will increase the activity. For sure, the downtown housing, some of the apartments that are coming up within the downtown, I think that will absolutely increase the activity in the evening. I think the demographics is the type that is going to be out, doing things and inviting friends and so forth. So all in all, I'm very happy. I know the committee and staff have just really worked super hard on this, and so I fully support it. Mr. Mayor?
I have one thing about the safety issue. I think it was back in 98, 99 or something, we had a report or something that indicated especially women did not care to come down at night to Brand Boulevard. They did not feel safe. So I don't know if that trend still exists, is it changing? So I wouldn't want to dismiss the safety angle totally, less deem that they're, that the problem is solved and they're not afraid anymore.
I think what you'll see to both of those points is the folks that do the cleaning, the folks that are the ambassadors that help with the marketing and promotions also can double as just additional eyes and ears. That knocks out both birds with that one stone. But the points well taken about the marketing.
And in terms of maintenance, I mean, you can never have, you know, clean sidewalks. It's too total positive, but like I say, I think the first go-around, let's try to get some people and get some new businesses in there to, to increase the business activity.
One other thing. I guess Disneyland and all the amusement parks clean their parks every single night. Ever seen any gum, nothing. Americana's the same way. I presume you clean every single night. Is that true? I'm getting a shake of the head yes from Mr. Lemo. So the more cleaning on the streets, it can only help us.
Okay, do I have a motion for...
I'll move 1A and B for the council.
Second. Roll call.
Council members, Friedman?
Yes.
Manukin?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Quintero?
Yes.
I'll move 1C for the, that other thing.
Successor.
The successor agency.
Second.
Roll call.
Board members, Friedman?
Yes.
Manukin?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Chair Quintero?
Yes. I need a motion to adjourn the council.
Second.
Okay, and we will convene to, the successor agency will convene to a closed session, or will recess to a closed session.